Good afternoon. I am going to call to order this regular meeting of the Race Equity Subcommittee and the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, August 28th. My name is Andrea Jenkins and I am the Chair of both these committees. And at the dais with me today are Councilmembers Johnson, Ellison, Schrader, Cunnell, and Fletcher. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. There are only six of us and Councilmember Reich has just joined us, which now gives us a quorum. And we have one agenda item on the Race Equity Subcommittee, and that is a report about the RECAST Minneapolis Resilience 365 Fund or 365 Fund update for 2018. And we also have been joined by Council President Bender. And I am going to invite Ebony Adedayo to give us that update. And we have now been joined by Councilmembers Pomisano and Goodman. Welcome, Ms. Adedayo.
Thank you so much for having me. Good afternoon, Chair Jenkins and members of the council. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to come and share with you guys, I'm giving you an update on our RECAST Resiliency 365 projects. So we're going to get right into the presentation. RECAST overall is committed to seeking and supporting community-based initiatives aimed at reducing and responding to trauma, as many of you know. Our support addresses trauma in many forms, including incident-based events, as well as the trauma from long-term persistent trauma like institutional and systemic racism. The funding that we have through this program supports projects that increase trauma awareness, promote resiliency and healing, and also deepen resident knowledge around policy and systems change work. That is the overall gamut of our work. And our resiliency project aims to take some of that work to another level. It aims, as I said, to redo, to increase trauma awareness, build skills around healing and resiliency, promote systems change throughout the city. We came to this project because of a strategic planning process that we did with our advisory team in 2017. That advisory team consists of members of community organizations, agencies, as well as city department and staff. In that strategic planning process, our advisory team wanted to use a participatory budgeting model as a vehicle to reach program goals and engage residents in decision-making to make sure that those who are typically not a part of decision-making processes have access to those types of opportunities. The Resiliency 365 Fund is a direct response to that guidance, which is also an outgrowth of several different bodies of work, including a rapid response to officer-involved shootings and our critical incident protocol. Initially, we were not clear about how we were going to use the funding, but we were given an opportunity to have access to our year one funds in May. And that gave us an opportunity to think about how we were going to use this big chunk of funds, and we conceptualized the resiliency 365 process. Because of the time constraint, we felt that the participatory budgeting model was actually our best method at moving this body of work forward. So I talked about how we started. Let's talk a little bit about the process. So we announced the funding opportunity at the last Race Equity Subcommittee hearing back in June. We talked about how these funds would be available to give organizations and entities an opportunity to apply for different bodies of work throughout the city. We created three different funding levels, including our ripple effect funding level, which gave organizations that have very small capacity an opportunity to apply for $2,000 and $250. We also constructed our wave effect funding, which gave members an opportunity to apply for between what was the ripple effect and anything up to $25,000. And we also constructed the tsunami level that gave people an opportunity to apply for up to $75,000. We endeavor to give out 40 grants in the ripple effect category, up to 10 in the wave effect, and two in the tsunami effect. So we announced the funding opportunity, we had different funding levels. We also communicated about the opportunity as far and wide as we possibly could, starting with the city council meeting. In addition, we pushed the opportunity out on social media, through email, our personal networks, as well as partnering with different city departments to let them know about the opportunity. We provided, and when I say we, I mean our staff, we all provided opportunities for those who wanted to submit proposals to receive technical assistance from us. One of the things that we've realized as we have been doing RECAST is that a lot of people are interested in funding opportunities and don't know how to get through the city contracting process. They may have questions about RFQ language, they may have questions about just how to fill out the application in general. And so because we know that economics is so deeply tied to trauma, we wanted to make sure that we provided hands-on technical assistance to those who had those barriers. And then we had this voting piece that was a part of the process. As I said, it was a participatory budgeting model, and so we wanted to make sure we had participants all throughout the city of Minneapolis, those who lived, worked, and played in the city as a primary place, that they had access to voting opportunities. We constructed three different voting opportunities that were physical. We partnered with Open Streets to host a table there. We tabled at Bryan Quill as well, and we also partnered at Flo. By doing that, we were able to really tap into the things that were already existing in community, instead of creating something new, which also really gelled nicely with our very tight timeline as well. In addition to the physical voting locations, we also gave opportunity for people to vote online. By far, it was the most prevalent way that people voted, with over 2,600 votes online. The other thing that we did is we provided an opportunity for organizations that we knew had language barriers and technology barriers, the opportunity to print off the ballot and hand those in in person. We knew that we wouldn't be able to translate the ballots into certain languages before we started. We also knew that for many of our cultures, that even with the written language, because those languages are very oral, that the written language doesn't always do justice to what people know. And so we wanted to make sure that people had as most access to the voting opportunity as possible. And so we provided the online ballot for organizations to encourage people to participate, not just vote for their projects, but to make sure that residents were meaningfully represented in the project. As a result, throughout these voting mechanisms, we had 300 people participate in person. We had 100 people participate through an online voting ballot process. In total, we had about 3,104 votes throughout the whole process. As I said, again, our online voting mechanism was the most popular way in which people voted. And we also collaborated with city departments in doing this work. One really fantastic testimony is that our Urban Scholars really pitched in a lot during the last two weeks of July to make sure that this process was done really, really well. They volunteered to help us, well, not volunteer, but they were compensated to help us put together the ballots, and they also helped us table at some of the voting events as well. We also partnered with NCR to think about what we could do around language accessibility, and we pushed this word out through our Health Department, as well as our Arts and Creative City Making Department as well. So in the end, because of all of these efforts, as I said, we were able to recruit 3,104 people to vote, which ended up resulting in 29 projects being funded based on communities' participation in the voting process. The amount of these projects spanning all categories is $495,700, with 11 projects being funded in the ripple effect category, 16 in the wave, and two in the tsunami. We'll talk about this a little bit later, but one of the reasons why we were able to fund more in the wave effect category than we initially anticipated was because we did not get that initial 40 in the ripple effect, which we were anticipating, which is really, really great, because this would have been a menstrual nightmare. But we ended up getting less within that category, and people in the wave affected and applied up to $25,000, so we had more wiggle room, which gave us an opportunity to spread those dollars even further than we initially anticipated. And so this is a breakdown of our voting demographics in terms of ethnicity, age, and gender and sex. As you can see through this slide, the most overwhelming representation that we had was from African-Americans and African immigrants, followed by European-Americans. But we also did have representation from Asian Pacific Islanders and Southeast Asians, as well as Latinx and American Indians as well. Overwhelmingly, for the age category, we had the highest participation between the 35 and 55 age category, followed by 21 through 34. We did allow people under 14 to vote. One of the reasons we did that is because we know that for some immigrants, that language barrier really plays a role into whether or not people can access opportunities. And we know that many do end up translating for their parents. And so we wanted to give opportunity for younger people to do it because of that reason, but also we know that many young people have a very solid analysis around our systems and wanted to not discount them because of their age. And then you see the breakdown with gender and sex as well. Overwhelmingly, more participants that were female, followed by male. But we also had some representation with our transgender and two-spirit communities as well.
So Ms. Adedayo?
Adedayo.
I'm sorry?
Adedayo.
Adedayo, I'm so sorry. I apologize. I'm just curious, so in demographics that you collected, people weren't able to self-identify online when they were doing the voting?
Yes, and so we had that breakdown on the printed ballots, as well as on the surveys online as well. And one of the reasons we did that is because we wanted to be able to see who was participating. In previous projects that have been a part of, the online survey skews towards European-Americans, and so we wanted to be able to make sure that that was not the case, that everyone was really participating in the process. And so to see that such a high number of African-Americans and other immigrants, people of color participated is encouraging for our work going forward, so that we can continue to use the online process, instead of thinking that it's just going to be a mechanism for more European-Americans that have access, as opposed to others' ethnicities.
Right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And we have another comment, question from Councilmember Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Adedayo?
Yes.
I participated in the survey, because you had sent us a couple of emails asking us to do so. I didn't choose anyone, because I didn't think I was supposed to choose anyone. But I just wanted to say, I did do the entire survey. It took almost an hour to read through all of the applications, and I thought it was extremely well-presented. It was easy to understand what everyone was suggesting, I understood the three different categories, and I didn't feel like it was fair for me to vote, but I thought it was extremely well-done, and it seemed like a very fair and equitable process. And it's really different than the way we've done things in the past, and I just wanted to commend you as someone who tried to use the system and it worked, the computer system. That, I thought you did a really great job with it, and thank you for sending us emails and including us and seeing what you were doing for work. I'm excited to see what won and what's been funded.
Absolutely. So two things with your comment, and then I want to continue to move on. One of the gaps that we need to continue to close in the future is to make sure that our city staff are participating, because it was an opportunity for all people who work and live in Minneapolis to participate, which means that our city staff, and so I voted, even though I don't live in Minneapolis, I work here, and so I wanted to make sure that everyone was represented in the process. And so that's a gap that we need to continue to close in the future. There are also printed-out handouts of all of the projects that were funded, and so I'm not going to talk about the specific projects today, but there are handouts of that, and we can also send those electronically if you want to save paper.
So, before you're done answering that?
Yes.
We have a question or comment from Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I just had a couple of questions. I think the participatory budgeting part of this is so interesting.
Yeah.
And when I was looking at the breakdown of statistics, I was curious, one, if you could answer, yes, I work in Minneapolis, and yes, I live in one of the areas, so that might be counted twice?
No, it was only counted once.
You only had to choose one of those, because I have to live?
Well, you could choose multiple, but it wouldn't be like an increase, it wouldn't increase the number of people voting. And so you could choose that you lived in Minneapolis, and you could choose that you work in Minneapolis?
I'm pretty sure that's what I chose. And then it says there's a total of 3,105, so did we sort that out to make sure that I didn't get counted in the total twice?
I see what you mean. No, there are still 3,000 unique votes.
Okay, okay. Excellent. Then I was also a little bit curious about the electronic voting, because I know you had some events that you went to, and people could vote at the event.
Absolutely.
Did you bring tablets to those events, or computers?
They were all printed-out ballots.
So those were all paper ballots?
They were all paper ballots, and then the paper ballots were entered in our electronic system online, so that we were summarizing all of the votes in one system.
Do you have a, you probably do, a record of how many ballots started as paper ballots versus how many were done just online?
So we have about 400 paper ballots.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Other question?
I think that's it for now.
Okay. And so we also wanted to be able to show you a breakdown of the demographics and geography of the projects that were funded. And so as we said, there were 29 total projects that were funded, representing work that will be targeted towards African-Americans, Native Americans, West African, East African, including Somali, youth of color, Latinx, European-American, males, females, LGBTQ, representing all ages, all in Minneapolis. And so that's our target, that's where the grant is situated, and so all of this work is targeting people in Minneapolis. But if you look at the map to your right, you will see the breakdown in which projects were funded across different neighborhoods and across North and South as well. And so of the 496,689, over 300,000 were funded in North, and a little over 100,000 were funded in South Minneapolis. And you see a total of the different neighborhoods across those different regions. And so with the Resiliency 365 funding opportunity, as we said, we announced this at the city council meeting, and we really put this together really, really quickly, because we knew we had an opportunity that we wanted to move on, and we didn't want to wait. And so the metaphor that I use in describing this process is that we were building, flying, maintaining, and repairing the plane at the same time, because there were so many different, and see, it's a metaphor that works. There were so many different pieces that we needed to make sure that we were dotting our i's and crossing our t's. And so one of the things with the decisions along the way is that we adjusted the project descriptions and compositions of teams after the ballots were already printed and already posted. One of the reasons we did that is because we, project teams came back to us and said, well, you didn't get my name correct, or there's an organization here that shouldn't be listed, or this organization wasn't listed the way they should have been. And so we had to be flexible in the way that we were working with the ballots in a typical voting process, that would not be the case. We also only permitted one proposal per project team. That wasn't a written rule that we had, but it was something that we were communicating throughout our team, and there was a little bit of miscommunication along the way, and we had some organizations submit more than one project proposal. And so one of the things that we did, that I did, after all of the projects came in, I called teams to ask them which category would they prefer to have their proposal represented. And I think we made two different calls, and there was one call and an email that we ended up missing out on, because those rules weren't clear in the beginning. We also needed to make further clarifications around our funding restrictions. SAMSA provides a list of things that we cannot use the funds with. We also know that the city also provides us with some guidance around how we can spend funding dollars, and we didn't put that in the funding restrictions. There are also things that we were convinced as a team that we needed to be really clear about, things that we weren't going to purchase, and that wasn't there either. But we knew that based on the validity of our relationship with the city, the work that we wanted to be able to continue to stand up and do, that we couldn't fund those things, and they wasn't clear-cut in the beginning. We had to go back and make sure that people were aware of that at the end. As I said, we added more projects in the wave category than we initially anticipated. We initially anticipated adding, only having 10 projects represent in that category, we ended up having 16. For us, this was really, really significant, because this meant that there were some organizations that represented working with immigrant and refugees, that were just in that bottom six that were able to be funded as a result. So I'm really glad that we were able to extend that opportunity further than we initially conceptualized. We also randomized the project order on the online ballots, because we didn't want multiple voters coming in thinking that, and only voting for the top projects, and not scrolling down to figure out the rest of them. So we wanted to give more opportunities for all of the projects to get voted. So, our lessons learned while building, flying, maintaining, and repairing the plane. We should build in a more cohesive screening process before the community voting. We did have an opportunity to screen beforehand, and we should have just given ourselves more time between when the projects were due and when the ballots were printed, to make sure that that screening process could be more robust. We really value the community voting process, and so we turned most of that decision-making over to the community. But we should, as a city, make sure that we have more oversight over what we can get funded, so we don't have to go back and make corrections in the end. One of the other things was this having simplified ballots. I really appreciate the comment that Councilmember Goodman made about how easy it was to go through the computer voting process, and we also know that wasn't the case for everyone, and that some people, because of time, because of access, because of language, just didn't have that luxury to sit for that amount of time. So we want to make sure that in the future, we have simplified ballots. One of the things that I did not mention before is that we also partnered with the city clerk's office as the ballots came in and got some technical assistance from them about how we should respond to some things in this project, but also how we can make sure that we build more measures in moving forward. Another really beautiful lesson that we had is that we did, what we set out to do, we accomplished, in providing more voting opportunities for individuals who've never voted before. By not requiring IDs or people to be citizens, or some of the other mechanisms that our systems put in place to say that people are legitimate to vote, we were able to make sure that people that have had records, or have not voted before, or who are not documented, and all those other barriers were able to be a part of this process, which is healing and cathartic, because that means that people who live, work, and play in Minneapolis all get to participate, and not just a select few. The other unfortunate lesson is that there was some unnecessary competition between the project teams. I think this lends itself bigger to what RECAST is. This is a nonprofit industrial funding philanthropy problem. It's also a trauma response as well. But in the future, we would like to make sure that when we are putting out projects, that we're mitigating the competition as much as possible. One of the vendors that initially submitted an application actually withdrew the application, because, in her words, she said that she didn't want to compete against people that she needed to build relationships with and work with, which I think is real. It's a real testament to like some of the positioning that ends up happening in these sorts of things. That is all I have. Are there questions, other questions that have not already been asked?
Thank you for that excellent report and fast work, building, maintaining, putting gas, repairing on the fly. We have a question or comment from Councilmember Cunningham.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The issue of the inherent competitive nature of grants is something that I feel like I've really struggled with as a council member, and as somebody who's really thinking about, well, how do we do participatory budgeting without a competitive aspect? Because inherently, the model of participatory budgeting is through the granting process. And so I'm curious, from the perspective of a racial equity analysis, do you have any recommendations on how we can rethink as a city? I know we have the nonprofit industrial complex that gets in the way and creates culture, but like how can, do you have any recommendations on how we can push back on that?
So after the funding process was over, I was able, I had an opportunity to talk with our technical assistance providers, who are based in California, and they have provided technical assistance for RECAST over the last couple of years. One of the things that they recommended doing, and this is based on some very similar work that they have done, is having a process that's more collaborative in nature, so that we are mitigating against some, not all, of the competition. And so by inviting people to be together in a room where together we're building out what we want to see, together we're building out the types of projects we want to fund, that there is an element of relationship that ends up being established. And so even though we still may be competing against, for different funds, we are not as maybe aggressive in the competition. That could be a strategy. Otherwise, I really don't, I think that's something that we're all trying to figure out, because it is such a huge issue, and as I said, the issue isn't just remain to RECAST. It's all over our city, our state, our country, quite frankly. So it's a big thing that we should continue to solution around. So I have some answers, but not all answers.
Which makes sense. That's a, it's a pretty big topic. For the Penn Avenue Public Safety Collaborative Strategies, we tried to take that turn, but we had, like I think that one of the challenges was that it wasn't communicated enough, that this isn't a competition, but instead collaborative, just based on the inherent culture. So I think some assumptions were made, that if everybody's brought to the table, well, then therefore, well, it worked in Little Earth, so it should work over here, but what actually happened is folks got really competitive, even more competitive at the table, and felt really uncomfortable, that they had to like have a conversation with somebody that they felt like they were competing with for money. So I would love to keep talking to all of you about this and keep thinking through it, because this process is just one example of an opportunity for us to build trust in government, and for government to do business differently. So I would love to continue to work with you all and brainstorm on how we can most effectively figure out participatory budgeting without that gross competitive aspect to it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you. Appreciate all this information. I just have a question about when we'll get to hear about it next, and how we're going to evaluate whether or not it's been successful. I mean, it certainly sounds like this phase of it has been successful, but have we talked about how we're going to measure it down the road, maybe after some of the grants have been, money's been used?
Absolutely. So right now, we are putting together the contracts and getting people invoice, so that they can start on the work. One of the things that we built into the contract for the wave and the tsunami, and that we are also requiring of the ripple as well, is that people participate in evaluation measures on the back end. And so we are still defining what those will look like, but we have an evaluator that we're working with for RECAST. We also have our technical advisor, I mean, our technical assistance team, who has been providing some leadership to this. We also had our advisory team meeting last week, where people gave us some really solid pointers on what the evaluation could look like. And to kind of get to some of the competition pieces at the same time, we have thought about bringing all of the providers and vendors together to kind of have a listening session about how to do this differently in the future. We also are asking all of our providers to fill out reporting forms, so we get from them a high-level sense of evaluation around what has worked in their program. We also will be providing surveys to all of the participants, so that those who are participating in the projects, but also have an opportunity to weigh in. And so we're building an evaluation at different components of the grant, that we'll be able to follow up with you on that probably late fall.
I appreciate that. One of the things I'll just throw out there is, sometimes in this process, part of what we want to accomplish maybe is building a capacity to deal with future issues too. And sometimes we don't actually measure that, and we think about, oh, the results for the people actually served, and the end maybe weren't, I don't know, that's what we're all focused on, not necessarily whether we've maybe built the capacity in the community to solve these problems next time, or that.
Yeah.
So keep that in mind, and you probably are already.
Yes. That's a big sustainability piece.
Other questions or comments? Oh, Councilmember Cunnell?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So thank you so much for this thorough presentation, and I was able to log online and participate, and so I got to feel the process myself. And just as you're doing the lessons learned conversation, I just wanted to share from my experience as an elected official engaged with the Collaborative Safety Strategies Program, and how it played out over the last two years. I have some comments, and then I have a question for this program. So on the point of a necessary competition, what we learned from the Collaborative Safety Strategies Program the first year was exactly- Strategies Program the first year was exactly that. And so the second time that it was put together, I think the Health Department worked with NCR to give this, birth to this idea of bringing people together to brainstorm together before they submitted the application. And I can just speak to my experience on how that went this year in South Minneapolis and it ended up bringing together a variety of people at Mercado Central to hold a session that folks called revolutionary and there was like a lot of really, I guess, dynamic conversations between different groups who were thinking about similar issues and, and met new folks and built relationships. And encouraging that ideation was really the game changer for the South Minneapolis component of the program this time around. And luckily, investing in those kinds of programs proved to be really effective in anticipating some of the challenges that we have now. And now we have street outreach workers that were funded through that program who are helping with the encampment in Councilmember Worsama's ward and, and with a lot of impacted American Indian families from my district. And so I, I want to see how we can maybe bring more people together throughout the enterprise that are working on similar projects to collaborate together and think through some of the things that worked for their programs and maybe didn't work for some other programs, just because I think part of the challenge of doing some of this work in, in City Hall is that there are so many different units that are touching similar conversations and sometimes we don't allow ourselves the time or energy to build in that internal collaboration as we're rolling out future initiatives. And just learning from that experience where the Health Department was able to help NCR kind of conceive and think through this, this one change that, that proved to be very positive and effective for the South Minneapolis component of, of the program was for me a big learning opportunity, as well as the fact that I was, as a council member, really actively promoting those opportunities. And I think that I feel like I didn't do that as much with this program and I want to apologize for that, but also just want to lend myself to having my staff in my office just be more actively involved and showing up in, in this conversation in a way where we can, you know, get the information out through social media and our newsletters and do it more consistently and, and reaching out, you know, via email. I mean, I remember emailing a lot of folks, just letting them know like this process is about to happen, you know, you're going to be able to participate, make sure it's on your calendar and sending out even calendar invites through my own calendar outlook to make sure that it was on people's radar. And then lastly, I'm just curious, as you're looking at the future of this program, can you speak to a little bit about, because what I've noticed is that when we start a program and then we let it play out for one or two years and then we discontinue it, I feel like we miss some of the evaluative tools of whether or not those things worked and then we like move on to something else because we think that's going to work better. And I'm just kind of wondering what your perspective is in terms of like, will this program, do you think that it's going to continue for like the next three years where we can have some hardy evaluation and evidence-based information that can help us understand whether this is having an impact or what kind of an impact or what kinds of things are, are happening with this? Because with the, for example, Collaborative Safety Strategies Program, it was funded for two years and now it's discontinued and it's kind of like, we're just like figuring it out, you know? And there's not enough time to learn from like what's happening to figure out what the future holds. So I'm just curious about like what you're thinking about this program and what the next, you know, three to five years look like for this.
This is a really great question. And so one of the things I mentioned when we opened up is that, one of the reasons why we provided this opportunity is because we had access to our carryover funding from year one. And so that gave us an opportunity to have access to almost $500,000 to spend on this program. I'm not sure if we will have that sort of thing in year three. I also don't want to wait to the end of, almost the end of year three to think about whether or not we're going to move this forward. However, we are conceptualizing what does having a hybrid of a critical incident response, resiliency through 65, like a process that lends itself to participatory budgeting that also includes city staff and city staff departments in a deeper way. That's one of the things that we conceptualize in having our critical incident response protocol that we weren't able to bring forward completely in this process. And so we will have something to this complete nature, no, but it will give people an opportunity to participate in the budgeting process and also give us an opportunity to bring city staff and electus in that conversation in a deeper way. Absolutely. But to your point about the evaluation, I completely agree. So we need to continue to think about how we move the program forward. Just, it'll just be different.
The Chair recognizes Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I wanted to underscore a lot of the points that Councilmember Cunnion just made and I think this is probably, you could respond if you would like, but I don't want to put you on the spot about budget issues. But I did also note that the community's collaborative safety strategies were not funded in the proposed budget and that's been a significant amount of funding over the last couple of years focused in similar geographies. And, you know, I would defer to the leadership of the council members that represent those wards to help, you know, provide the leadership about, you know, if there's particular geographies that aren't as represented through this process, maybe we do consider in this budget funding some continued, you know, that sort of approach, the collaborative safety approach, or perhaps we consider augmenting this through that. Or, I mean, I think there's, we would look to staff as well to hear, you know, how the outreach went in particular communities or if there are any missing pieces of this that we might want to consider continuing to fund through the collaborative safety, safety strategies. Because to the point that Councilmember Cunnion just made, I think over time, if we don't sort of support the successes that we're starting to see, we probably lose a lot of the value of the investments that we've been making so far. So I think it's an open question over the next few months as we dig into this and hear more from our constituents and the council members.
That's a really great question, really solid points. Thank you. I can't speak to how we would move something like that forward, but I think we should continue to be in conversation about how we do collaborate in a deeper way around across many of our programs and projects, but I think it's a great idea.
Are there other questions or comments? Seenon, I want to thank you for this report. I'm, I'm really just curious if we're thinking about, I mean, this process seemed to, to have worked really well. It feels a bit unbalanced in terms of the distribution of, of resources and I'm wondering, are we thinking about ways to either increase outreach or, or how we try to ensure more parity across the city?
Yes, I think that's a great question. One of the things that I mentioned as we were talking about the wave effect projects is that because it was a participatory voting process, people were able to vote on as many projects as they liked. We were, because we extended that process, we were able to fund organizations that represented immigrant and refugees. Without that extension, we would not have been able to do that. One of the things that I would like to see moving forward is that we have some parameters around where we want to put dollars so that people are voting, but they're meeting these specific needs so that we are getting voting across North and South Minneapolis in a more balanced way, so that our immigrant and refugee populations are getting representation in a more balanced way as well. So I think that we can still have a participatory budgeting process in that, we just need to put some more mechanisms in place so that as people vote, they're fulfilling those, those needs.
Wow.
If that answers your question.
Thank you. Wow, thank you very much and thank you so much to, to the entire Recast team. I know all of you put a lot of energy and effort into that and it, it was a response to some, specifically what the grant was intended, to, you know, community trauma that has and continues to, to impact our, our community. So thank you all for those efforts. And with that, I move to receive and file this presentation. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of your polls say nay and that item carries.
Thank you. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you. And seeing no further business before the Race Equity Subcommittee, we will continue with the remaining committee of the whole business before us, which is to receive reports from the Standing Committees on Matters to be considered by the full council at our regular meeting this Friday. And we will begin with the Budget Committee Chair by Councilmember Palmisano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you just mentioned, there, there will be nothing being forwarded to council this cycle and nearly all of you were there, so I won't belabor it. But I did want to mention that we received and filed the mayor's budget and began our overview of it. The next step, as far as our Budget Committee is concerned, is September 12th and that's a one-hour scheduled meeting. Half of that topic, as was in your email, we actually did end up getting into it, was about what current service levels mean. But after conversation with finance, we would like to use that one-hour session next time to discuss the five-year capital plan, which was something we touched on but couldn't talk in depth on, and also talk about the long-term plan for utility rates, which was another part of that conversation. So I'll be sending that notice out to you all and please reach out to me individually if you feel there's an element of the budget in general that isn't department-specific before we start reviewing those departments. So, and thanks for everybody's participation yesterday. It was good.
Thank you. That was a, a great way to start really thinking about this budget and the process. So are there any other questions for Councilmember Palmisano? Seenon, we will move to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee Chair by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Allison's going to present the report today and in committee, and in the council meeting because I was not in attendance on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Yes, I made my EDRS chairmanship debut. So I'll give that report. EDRS has 11 items to bring to the full council this Friday. The first is the issuance of up to 705,000 501(c)(3) bonds to the East Side Neighborhood Service, Services. Issue two is the issuance of up to $1,800,000 in 501(c)(3) bonds to Avivo, formerly Resource, for 1810 and 1820 Columbus Avenue South. Third item is a on-sale liquor license for Elliott Park Hotel. Item number four is on-sale wine and strong beer license for Mixed Blood Theater Company. Item number five is the issuance of up to $550 million in 501(c)(3) revenue bonds to Fairview Health Services. And item number six is the license revocation for O'Cheese Restaurant because they have not paid taxes. Item number seven is the liquor license approvals. Item number eight is the general license renewals. Number nine is the gambling license approvals. And 10 are the gambling license renewals. And item number 11 is exclusive development rights for AECOM for 800 Washington South, Avenue South. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Councilmember Allison? Seenon, we will next hear from the Housing Policy and Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Vice President. The Housing Policy and Development Committee had six items that we'll be bringing forward for approval. The first is a report on our 2017 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. This is known as the CAPER's Report and has to do with the various programs that we get funded through the HUD program, the federal government. Second item is approving contracts with Neighbor Works Home Partners and Build Wealth Minnesota to provide lending administration services for our 2018 Home Ownership Opportunity Minneapolis Program. Third item is establishing a new Minneapolis Small and Medium Multifamily Loan Program. Fourth item is approving program guidelines for the Minneapolis NOAA Preservation Fund. Fifth item is approving some modifications to our Minneapolis Home Program. And the last item was receiving a report from our consultant on inclusionary zoning and also some staff directions related to that to kind of tee us up to make some, some decisions later this fall about potential program, a pilot program for the short term and also recommendations for a longer inclusionary zoning program for the future. Happy to stand for any questions? Any discussion on any of those items?
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any questions for Councilmember Gordon? Seenon, we will next hear the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee Report given by Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee will be bringing forward four items for consideration at Friday's City Council Meeting. The first is amending a council action to reflect an upgraded, or updated, excuse me, grant dollar amount from the Washburn Center for Children for, for amounts up to $300,000 to address youth mental health needs at our school-based clinics. The second is accepting a grant from Minnesota Department of Human Services for a school, school-based clinic clinician training in, for this fall. Three is a site agreement with AmeriCorps to host for one year a Minnesota opioid response corps member to work on designing and framing the work of the Minneapolis Health Department in collaboration with the mayor's task force on the opioid epidemic. And the last item is clean car standards, authorizing the sustainability manager and/or the city attorney on behalf of the city to join in any state or national coalitions of government entities to defend the 2016 clean car standards. I would also like to recommend for my colleagues and for folks watching at home to check out the presentations at our August 20th meeting. The first presentation was about healthy sexuality and healthy and safe children and youth, which highlights some of the critical work that's happening in the Health Department. We have some work that's specific to developing East African immigrant peer, healthy sexual educators. We have some work that's happening with the school-based clinics, healthy relationship education, trauma-informed work and so on. The second presentation was about the Minneapolis Environmental Education Program, which is led by Environmental Health Inspector Marquita Keys, which promotes STEM education through hands-on environmental experiments, typical to the kind of work that you would see an environmental health inspector do, like measuring air quality or understanding emerald ashbores. And the reason why I wanted to bring this up is because, this particular piece up is because this is a very powerful aspect in the Environmental Health Division that allows city staff to use up to 20% of their time beyond their typical duties to pursue, pursue passion projects. And so we've had some really great work like conservation of bees, some tree work, as well as, as our STEM education environmental work. So just wanted to share that to make sure that my colleagues are informed about the work that's happening and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. Are there any questions at all? Seenon, we will hear from the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee chaired by Councilmember Cunnion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the Public Safety Committee is bringing five items forward for consideration at the full city council. Item number one is a contract with Brackens Consulting and Psychological Services for Police Employee Mental Health Services. Item number two is a grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety in the Office of Traffic Safety for a DWI enforcement officer. Item number three is a redistribution of pulse oximeters from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources to the Minneapolis Fire Department. Item number four is a Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education Training Academy reimbursement. And number five is another Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education Training reimbursement redistribution. And those are all the items.
Thank you, Chair Cunnion. Are there any questions? Seenon, we will now hear from the Transportation and Public Works Committee chaired by Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee will be forwarding 15 items for consideration. Item one is the West Broadway Improvement Special Service District Operating Plan and Budget Amendments. Items two through six are all contract amendments with ongoing work of the department for existing projects. Item seven is the Fourth Street Southeast Street Lighting District and that goes from 25th Avenue Southeast to Malcolm Avenue Southeast. And setting that public hearing for a date, I'm not quite seeing it. Oh, I'll make sure that's in the full report. Oh, no, October 9th, 2018. Items- Items eight through 15 are all agreements and adjustments to activities of the department, and I can go into any detail as requested by the body.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Are there any questions?
Seeing no questions, we will now hear the Ways and Means Committee Report given by Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Ways and Means Committee brings forward 12 items for consideration at this week's council. The first two are legal settlements, both for unrelated incidents related to water utility operations. Item number three is a gift acceptance for city staff travel for Kelly Muleman to attend the Urban Sustainability Directors Network. Items number four and five are authorizing small increases to existing contracts. Item number six is a contract with IC Systems and Diversified Adjustment Services for Professional Debt Collection Services. Item number seven is an appropriation for the 2018 elections budget. Item number eight is an agreement with Hillcrest Development for Public Works Parking. Item number nine is an acquisition settlement for 2625 University Avenue Northeast for the East Side Storage and Maintenance Facility Project. Item number 10 is a bid by KEVIT Companies for the new public service building, site work, utilities, earthwork, and deep foundations. Item number 11 is approving the collective bargaining agreement with the Stagehands Unit. And item number 12 is authorizing the city to join the local government amicus brief challenging the federal government's efforts to implement new exemptions to the contraceptive coverage mandate under the Affordable Care Act. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Fletcher. Are there any questions?
Seeing no questions, we will hear our next committee report, the Zoning and Planning Committee Chair by Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Zoning and Planning Committee will be bringing forward five items for approval on Friday. The first is the denial of a site plan review at 1300 New Brighton Boulevard. Number two is the denial of a rezoning application at the same address. Number three is the approval of a drainage and utility easement vacation for 125th Street Northeast. Number four is an item will be deleted. Unfortunately, a project is not ready to go and be deleted from the agenda. And number five will be moving forward without recommendation, a rezoning application as well as an ordinance amending Title 20 for the development at 2323 Jackson Street Northeast. Thank you, and I'll stand for questions.
Are there any questions for Councilmember Schrader?
Seeing none, we will next hear the Audit Committee Report given by Chair Palmisano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, there's nothing being forwarded to council this cycle from the Audit Committee, but I did want to note an important amendment made to the audit plan for this year, and it comes from last week's meeting that we were all invited to of the Police Conduct Oversight Commission. You might recall Andrea Brown coming and speaking to us in the last Public Safety Committee session and also perhaps during one of our larger public comment periods about the Police Conduct Oversight Commission and some of their work. The summer interns report included a conversation around recruitment and some of the barriers to recruitment in our police department that we could look at individually as a city. And so the recommended step from this intern was an audit, and we were, the internal audit department was engaged. The partners in looking at this, it's called an analysis of recruitment statistics in assessing the equity of recruiting standards, and our partners in this are the Office of Race Equity and the Minneapolis Police Department's Deputy Chief Art Knight. So I look forward to sharing with you the outcomes of that consult.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmisano. Are there any questions? And our next committee report is the Executive Committee, and that report will be given by Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Johnson will give the report today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Executive Committee will be bringing forward three items. The first is an appointed position in the MPD or the Police Department for Director of Public Information. Then items two and three are collective bargaining agreements, one with the Machinist Unit and the other with the Teamsters Unit. I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions?
Seeing no questions, that completes our business for this afternoon, and with no further business before us, this meeting is adjourned.